Welcome to the school committee meeting of Wednesday, August 28th at 3:00 PM. Can I ask you to please join me in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, just to acknowledge this is not our usual meeting time, so thank you for the members who are able to be here today. Ms. Bodenhofer is on her way, she's just coming from work, and unfortunately, Dr. Giblin was not able to join today because of a work commitment. So it's not the full committee, but we did arrange this pretty last minute, and I thank you for making time to be here. So, Dr. Thompson, is there anything that you have for your report or late agenda?
Yes, and from you, Madam Chair, and there is a copy of this in your packet, but it's an invitation from Sheriff McDermott to have school committee members participate in a sheriff's task force on juvenile substance abuse and mental health, and they're looking for members from the school committee to do that. He has not, at this point, determined when the meetings would be, he's looking to get membership and then, I guess, so I don't know if you would like to follow up with that, Madam Chair?
Yeah, so just to share a little bit more of the committee, Sheriff McDermott actually came to our last Impact Norwood meeting in the beginning of August, and I was planning to reach out to him to learn more anyway, I didn't know he was creating this task force, and this just came in my email yesterday. So he is putting together a task force, like Dr. Thompson said, he wants at least one person from each school committee, you can see he's requesting members from school committees from Avalon, Bellingham, Braintree, Brookline, Canton, Cohasset, Dedham, Dover, Foxborough, Franklin, Holbrook, Medfield, Medway, Millis, Milton, Needham, Norfolk, Norwood, Plainville, Quincy, Randolph, Sharon, Stoughton, Walpole, Wosley, Westwood, Weymouth, and Reneth. So it is a large task force that he's putting together. I was thinking two people might want to be appointed, just because of the schedule component. Does anybody have any interest in serving on the task force?
I'd be happy to serve time for that.
Okay. I'm happy to do it, since I've already part of Impact Norwood, and it kind of aligns with what we're doing there, but I didn't want to make the assumption you wanted me there.
Go for it. Do good.
So, we officially have a quorum, there's only three of us, but I'm not supposed to make motions as chair, so do one of you want to make a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Teresa and Dave to serve on the Kamloops, Massachusetts County of Norfolk Sheriff Task Force.
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. This is what happens when only three of five people are here.
It's a three-o vote, okay?
All right, great, anything else under the late report?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
All right, wonderful, well, the next part on our agenda is budget with Ms. Sheridan, and Ms. Sheridan, welcome, this is your first official meeting with us, although you were here before. Hope everything is going well so far.
It is, it's great, it's great to be here, very busy, but it's good to be here.
Sure, it's a whirlwind at this moment. So you're here today to share with us more about some special education accounts and a request that has come our way through the business office?
Yeah, on the special education tuition and transportation accounts, the way they would do it, they would do a purchase order at the beginning of the year for what the estimates, what the expenses are going to be for the full year, and especially in the tuition accounts, without applying your circuit breaker, that's going to cause your individual account to go over, and the MUNIS system, the way you have it now, is not allowing us to pay any invoices because they're over budget. What we're requesting is to allow those accounts to go over, knowing that we'll be doing the circuit breaker adjustments, I don't know if you would like them done quarterly, if you do them at the end of the year, not sure how your preference is here. The other reason I feel it's important, whenever I do a circuit breaker, whenever I do a circuit breaker adjustment, I usually would attach actual invoices to go against that circuit breaker adjustment, and asking to do a circuit breaker adjustment right now is you're doing an adjustment on estimates and not actuals, so I prefer to do the adjustments later in the year and allow it to go over. I did review all the other district tuitions with special education to get an estimate of where they are today, and I don't foresee you having a problem at this point, you're a little bit over, but certainly not anywhere over that it will cause any problems, you have enough money in your circuit breaker login account right now, so I don't foresee any problems, it's just a matter of, I much prefer to do those adjustments on actuals than estimates, especially where special education tuition and transportation fluctuates with your student count. So, right now, we've kind of got a hands tied because we're putting in these purchase orders and we're not allowed to pay any of the invoices, so.
If I could just follow up, this is something that's different from our previous financial package, you did not have the ability to put restrictions on, so basically what happens is if someone overspends a line, you get a big red no for simplistic reasons, but special ed, special ed transportation are lines that are traditionally allowed to be overspent because you balance them at the end of the year or towards the spring when you have real numbers. Right now, they're estimates, and the town accountant is asking for a letter from the school committee giving him permission to remove those restrictions. I don't believe that they were, it was a possibility before under the old system, so, you know, as you know, those accounts, you know, we have bottom, or the school committee has bottom line budget authority, and it is that bottom line that you are given, but he's asking for a letter from the school committee that tells him that it's okay to take those off.
Any questions or concerns?
So, my apologies that I was late, I hit, rush hour shouldn't start before 2:30. Sorry. But, just to catch up, is there a motion on the floor at the time?
There's not a motion on the floor.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we ask Mr. McQuade to remove that restriction, and of course, that comes with the understanding that we, as a school committee, have full confidence that our business manager will take appropriate action and understand that that account obviously has to balance in the end, but that we understand that there may be temporary, there may be times that it looks like it's overdrawn.
Second the motion.
Okay, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, what I'll do is I'll work with Mr. Sheridan on a letter for the school committee chair to sign, and we'll get that over to Mr. McQuade.
Okay.
Sound good?
That sounds good. So, moving on now to old business, and I believe Mr. Ricardi is going to join us for the discussion on the middle school?
Yes, he's here to answer questions.
Will you sit here?
Yes, please.
I told, well, yeah, so that the public can hear the responses. So, we are looking to have a special town meeting warrant for the feasibility study, or to fund the feasibility study. Again, we're still in the eligibility phase, which goes through the end of January, and then we get selected to move on to the feasibility stage, but one of those mile markers we have to meet is the town has to approve us possibly spending in the future money on a feasibility study, and it does, as I learned today, I thought it was a feasibility and a design development, but Mr. Ricardi corrected me on that, so I don't know whether we want to have Mr. Ricardi for the committee and for the public kind of talk a little bit about the feasibility process, because it is two-stage. This is, you know, a number that was given to us from our building study, it is a number, it's up to that number, it does not mean that the town will necessarily spend, the number that has been suggested by AI3 is 1.5 million, we have checked back with Mr. Dunlop from AI3, who again, has seen the building and seen the site and has estimated that that is a good number to put out there as a placeholder. I also shared with the committee some of the information that I got from the MSBA on previous middle schools, and again, I would caution the public not to compare elementary schools to middle schools, there are different components to middle schools that make them more expensive, namely, science labs, you don't see science labs in elementary schools, for instance. So these are middle school projects, and only middle school projects going back to 2012, the one that is closest to us that was done, or they finished that feasibility A and B phase in September of '15, it looks like, or the whole project of '15, was in Beverly, and that feasibility study was 1.1 million. We are talking about building a middle school that might encompass about 1,200 students or so, 1,300 students, depending on whether decides if it's a six through eight, or about 1,100 students if it's six through eight, or a five through eight middle school? If it's a five through eight, it would be 1,100.
If it was a five through eight, it would be 1,100, right?
Five through eight, it would be about 11, 1,100.
Because our six through eight is roughly 800 right now.
Right, it's about 800 right now, so, based on that, that number, based on Beverly, and again, that was four years ago, 1.1 million, so 1.5 theoretically is not off the market, and that's an actual number.
Yeah, that's the number that would be advertised, that's not probably the number that people would come in in a bid with, that's, we cannot exceed that number, so if they want to be competitive, it's got to be something below that.
So do you want to explain the feasibility?
Sure.
Should we be selected for it?
Right, so, as you know, we're in the eligibility period right now, and the eligibility period started May 31st and ends of '19, and it ends January 27th of 2020. There are eight benchmarks that we have to produce during the eligibility period, we've produced four of those, and the last four are basically a maintenance and capital plan, capital outlay plan that we submit, and then there's the enrollment, the final enrollment certification has to be executed, and then there's the, that's by October 28th, and then by January 27th, we have to have the approval of the authorization of the town meeting for the 1.5 million dollars for feasibility, and then we sign a feasibility agreement. So eligibility ends January 27th of 2020. If we're lucky enough to then go into feasibility, feasibility is in two stages, it's a preliminary feasibility, where you go out to bid for your OPM, your project manager, and the design team that's going to design the feasibility and take a look at it, that's about a three-month process. The whole feasibility process is 12 to 15 months, so the day, if we're lucky enough to get accepted, you then count 15 months to be at the end of feasibility. Preliminary feasibility is really, you're coming up with your educational plan, and how are you going to use it in the building, you're coming up with, as I said, your OPM, your architectural firm to do the study with you, and you're looking at some sites where you potentially could do it, you're having discussions about what's the building going to be, is it going to be six through eight, is it going to be five through eight, is there going to be some other configuration? And then once that's, and you do a very quick, they do a very quick schematic, there's no building designed, you know, there's no architectural plans, it's just a schematic layout, basically looking at how much space you might be taking up on a piece of property, and then you would also do, if you selected, let's say we selected three sites, you'd do some geotech work on those sites, and then once that phase is done, then you go into the preferred feasibility portion, where you're actually coming up with three to five ideas about what we might do, is it renovation and addition, is it brand new, you know, any configuration of that, and that's where the building committee and this committee kicks that all around, and at the end of the day, you submit all of that to the MSBA, and they want to know that we've really done our due diligence and turned over every stone, and what is our preferred option that we would like to do. And at the end, that is about a 200-page report that gets, and then you hopefully get accepted again to move on. So, we're just at the very first stage, eligibility, and then feasibility for 15 months, and then you actually, if you get accepted, then you actually start designing the building, and that could be a two-year process, and then you go into a two-and-a-half-year odd construction. So, we could be six years away from this, from where we sit, so it could be 2026 by the time we occupy, and we'll all hold our breath that the Coakley hangs in there for those six years. So there's a lot of work, once, if and when we get accepted to feasibility, there's when all the hard work really starts and the planning. So, any other? Oh, the one thing, we would, the town would be reimbursed, whatever the percentage that they're going to reimburse for the total building, they would reimburse the town for the feasibility study.
If you're accepted?
No, I think anyway.
Anyway?
Yeah, they don't make you expend the money and, you know.
Oh, that's excellent.
Yeah.
So how much does MSBA match us for building, is it, what percentage?
The percentage is kind of negotiated, I mean, it could be 50%, it could be 50%, I don't believe they're in the 60% ranges anymore, so they're probably down in the 50s, you might be in the 40s, yeah, so, it all depends where they are in their whole cycle and how much money's available and all of that, so.
Got it, so if I could put this in layman's terms, this is showing that the town is committed to studying this, and we put out the money, they'll reimburse us, whether we go ahead with a new school or not?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So I was getting worried that, you know, we're going to be blowing this and have nothing come out of it, so.
Right, but even if, I mean, even if you don't get in year one, it still doesn't mean that you wouldn't apply for the second part of feasibility in another year, so part of this is about available funds, and prioritizing who's got, you know, the worst building in the worst shape and the worst situation. We're kind of up there, so, when we sat for eligibility, we had basically spent one year saying, we're going to put in for this, there are other schools that finally got in after four or five years, that tells you exactly where we are in the scheme of the ones that need to be fixed, the problems need to be fixed first.
And Paul, for the people just tuning in for the first time, can you give just a very short version of what's wrong with our school currently?
So I was just going to say that, 10 years ago, 11 years ago, the school department did a statement of interest to replace the HVAC system, because it was beyond its lifetime of use, that was 10 years ago, and it started out at $3 million, assuming the MSBA would pay half of that, we got turned down a couple of times, and then when we were going to go back in, the high school cropped up, so that kind of bumped the Coakley out for a while, and then after the high school was built, we kept refreshing our statement of interest, that after the high school was completed, we did another push, but then the Callahan boilers kind of came in, and that pushed it on the back burner, and then after the Callahan boilers, the school-wide study, the study happened of all our buildings, and that kind of took it off the table. So we are sitting here with a building with an HVAC system that should have been replaced 10 years ago, and we're looking at potentially another six years to stretch this thing out, so, you know, any day we could be coming to you saying, we're in big trouble, or hopefully we're not, but beyond the HVAC, the building design itself, I mean, it was a junior high school designed in the 50s basically, and built in the 60s, it's a, and I don't mean this in a bad way, but when you, I was in there this morning, taking a tour with some kids, it's a cave, you know, you walk around those corridors, you, and it's just a rectangle, but it is one of the most confusing buildings, you know, where am I, what floor am I on? So, and the classrooms are old and tired, the lighting is old and tired, the cafeteria is beyond old, there's no air conditioning in the cafeteria, it's just a tough building, that's, and it's also a building, in fairness to it, that has never stopped, it goes all year. There's about two weeks in the end of the summer, the last two weeks of August, where there's nothing going on in that building. So you talk about a building that has, you know, provided a service, you know, and it's actually a testament to how well it was actually built, provided a non-stop service basically since it's been open, and the building is just really tired out of all of our schools, and if you remember back when the town-wide study was done, the architects, you know, elementary schools, yes, our elementary schools are old, but the elementary school's all about the classroom, and the teachers make it look, it could be, Balt is 109 years old, you go in there and in the individual classrooms, you're in a little cocoon, and it's very nice. Middle school education is so different, it's the entire school, and, you know, workspace and group learning space, that does not exist in the Coakley, that's why the committee back then decided we need to do the Coakley first and foremost, so.
And just to add to all that great information, when I went to the MASC conference two years ago, there was a MSBA session I attended, and at that time, I can't remember the exact percentage, but it was a high percentage, they said it was in the 90s, like 90% of schools in Massachusetts who have had modular classrooms no longer do, Coakley has a couple modular classrooms that are years over their use, and I don't know if you've been in there, but often they're not properly heated or cooled, and they're, how many years overused? At least 10, right?
Oh, more than that, I've been here eight, they've been here, so they're in their, they're probably in their 12th or 15th, and this morning, when I was taking the tour and walking up, I felt like I was going into a, you know, when you walk up to get in an airplane? And I felt like the plane on the other end, I don't know if I want to get on it, because that was just the feeling of the walkway. They do, though, have independent air conditioning and heat, and, you know, they're, were never meant to be permanent.
Right.
So they're not constructed how you would construct a building to keep the cool in or keep the cold out, right, it's just, you know.
But that was one of the things that MSBA was focused on, any school that still has modular classrooms, it helped elevate them in this process. But Mara, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, a couple of things, I mean, this is something we obviously have to do, because the Coakley needs to move forward in the MSBA, but just a couple of things, it's just unfortunate that we just had the override and now we're back asking for this large chunk of money, so I just want to get some sense in terms of protection, so if we can just get a clarification that will definitely be reimbursed some portion of this in the feasibility, I think that would be something that would be really important to have during our presentation to town meeting. I'd also like to get some clarification, I believe, Dr. Thompson, you said that if, you know, if we don't get approved this year, we would have to, we'd obviously keep applying, but is this something we'd have to pay again? I would assume the answer would be no, but I think it would be good to have some real clarity from the MSBA for that, I'm just sort of trying to anticipate questions that, you know, as a town meeting member, knowing we just approved and override questions, I would have to make sure that the money's being protected, especially since this is a, if we get approved, right? There was one other question I had about the language, and I know the article language is sort of boilerplate, but it was in the article where it says, "The MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any costs the town incurs in connection with the feasibility study in excess of any grant approved by and received by the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town or take any other action in the matter." I was just a little confused, I don't know what I just read, I mean, like, I get it, kind of, but it seems like, in connection with the feasibility study in excess of any grant, but how much would that grant be, because I'm assuming that's not the whole building, right, that's just had to help with the feasibility, is that right?
Hang on, let me catch up to you.
It's the last sentence in the article.
The way I read that was to say that, well, first of all, I think that, or take any other action on the matter, is misplaced, I think it probably needs to go at the end of the first sentence, and that the MSBA's grant program is just meant to be, you know, a clarifying statement that they, the MSBA themselves recommends.
Yeah.
But I think the idea is, they're saying that, like, they, if they accept us, so, we would authorize the appropriation of this money, either through borrowing or through appropriation from free cash or somewhere else, but we would not actually spend this money unless the MSBA accepts us into the feasibility stage, right? So, but if they do accept us into that feasibility stage, we would expect that there would be reimbursement at some point, but I think what they're saying here is, look, whatever we don't reimburse you, you're responsible for.
I totally agree.
That was how I read that.
But I guess my, that's how I took it to be as well, and I don't know if we can finagle the language at all, or maybe just in our presentation make it clear, because it's just a blanket, the grant, and I'm assuming that it's, because exactly right to what I have said of, this is money if we're accepted to the feasibility, I'm assuming this is not part of the grant that they're going to give us for the building, it's a separate feasibility grant, I just think it needs to be a little clearer as to what we're kind of talking about.
Right.
And there was one other, oh, within our presentation, if we can just, because I'm understanding that this is money that we're going to spend for the feasibility stage, but how and what is it going to be spent on? Like, the feasibility, I don't want to just go in and be like, well, it's for the feasibility stage, sure, that seems fairly amorphous, like, exactly what is this 1.5 million going to get us?
Right, well, it's, I mean, I don't know if you want to answer that, but it's, but it's site, you know, they're looking at the site, whether that's going to work, they're looking at multiple, multiple ideas, if it's multiple sites, the testing for the sites, you know, do you have ledge there, do you not have ledge there, how buildable is the site, we're kind of looking at one spot because we don't have a lot of choices, and then looking at a preliminary design, architectural design.
Schematic.
Right, so.
But I would expect that before we get to town meeting, the building committee would have met, and that it would be their responsibility to make a full presentation to town meeting, and explain the various stages of the MSBA process, explain what is required in the feasibility period, what would happen in this feasibility study, and I think that we, as a school committee, should take a vote and say that we're in favor of this, but we need to remember that it's actually the board of selectmen who has responsibility over the schools.
Right.
The buildings.
The buildings, yep.
And so they're the ones who have to, they and the school building committee, which is made up of members of board of selectmen and members of the school committee and many other important stakeholders, including Mr. Ricardi, and including Dr. Thompson, and including Dr. Friesick as the principal of the middle school, they have a very important role in this, and so I think we need to make sure that it's clear that they will need to do a presentation at town meeting.
Right, and just to kind of come back to the language piece, so I took the MSBA boilerplate template, gave that to the town manager and the town, it went through town council, to bond council, back to the board of selectmen, I have then, I believe it went to the MSBA in that process, I sent it back to the MSBA, because they want to approve the language before it goes to town meeting, so that is all, I mean, the language is the language, you know, and, you know, once you have more than one or two lawyers involved, it can be a little difficult, but that's kind of where the language is, and, you know, as far as reimbursement, I'm not sure if they reimburse specifically for the feasibility, or when you build the project or go to the next phase, they include that reimbursement as part of the overall package, but I will, I will look into, into that, and that will be a question at town floor, and we'll be prepared to answer it, but this is, this is a borrow, borrow and appropriate up to this amount, that number has been vetted with the same group that has done our building study, they have They have twice now reiterated that that is a good number to use based on our site, and they would know better than anyone else. I did reach out to MSBA, asked them. They said, we don't give numbers. And a part of that is they have not really been to our site or done that level of looking, which is where we got this comparison for the last five years or so.
And just, Mara, one other thing I forgot to add. In the feasibility study, there is a huge amount of time spent on the, on the Coakley itself, doing a deep dive into the condition of the Coakley, behind the walls, in the classrooms, the whole site. So you're, it tells you at the end of the day whether, what is the true condition of your building and what is the value of your building? And basically, it's part of when you get to the preferred section, what do you want to do? Does it make sense to renovate? How do you renovate an existing school and add on? So that's all part, but a huge chunk is looking at the building itself. Okay?
And just to follow up, I, I just want to be clear of who's making the presentation and that stuff that we can work on, you know, in terms of that. But Dr. Thompson just said something a minute ago that, that kind of piqued my ear of, I sort of realized that we're asking to borrow up to 1.5. I just would like to, as a, and I have no control over what the buildings do and what the school and what the board of selectmen do in terms of a presentation. But as a school department, I'd like us to walk in there and say, we're borrowing up to 1.5. We think we're going to spend all of the 1.5. We think it's going to be 1,000. We think, and just, because, and to your point, we're going to be looking at the school. So does that mean we have to hire certain people to do that? I just, and the reason I'm just being a pain about this is I know as myself, I would be like, we just gave them how much money? You know?
So part of what you're hiring is a project manager?
Okay, that's, yeah, that's exactly, that's all I was asking for.
That helps, would help the building committee walk through the process. And you're also then hiring the firm that's actually going to be doing the study. And then they will bring in all of the subject matter experts.
Okay.
The engineers, the geotech people.
Okay.
The HVAC, the whole kit and caboodle. So you're really, at the end of the day, we should have a plan that says, yeah, we think the Coakley's worth saving, or no, we don't think it's worth saving, and here's the reasons why, the cost to prohibit. And here are the sites that we think are potential, but here's the site we really want. And here's the size of the building. And when you can do a schematic, you can do some pricing off of the schematic just using standard construction. Maya knows this more than me. Standard construction formulas. And you can get a ballpark number on what this potentially is going to cost.
Okay, so it's the case, it's, that's what the money's, that's all it's about.
It's all the, it's all the background information before you go into the actual design phase.
Gotcha, now I'm here.
And, and we're kind of, I mean, I always thought it was a feasibility, you know, is it feasible to do this? What's it going to be like? And then it's the design piece of it. So this is all the work that leads you up to the decision about, are you, are you in the program? Where is it going to be? What's it going to look like?
Right, yeah.
Is the site going to fit?
I understand what we're spending it on now, okay.
Maya, so I definitely agree with Mara that there are going to be people who have questions and who are feeling frustrated that, oh, well, you just got this extra money and you're going to do this. But I also want to remind everyone, and I know Mara knows this as well, that this 1.5 million has been part of the discussion for at least the last year and a half. And this is something that was, has certainly factored into all of the budget balancing committee decisions. And it's not something that we were trying to keep hidden under a rock and then surprise people with. I do think that there will be people who are surprised, and we definitely want to anticipate that and help everyone understand where we're at. But I just want to make it clear that, you know, this isn't, isn't new, exactly. But I would say, I think this last phrase, the last clause of this article has to be moved to the end of the last sentence. Because what the sentence is supposed to say is to see if the town will vote to appropriate, da-da-da-da-da-da, or take any other action on the matter, right? That's all supposed to be part of one sentence. And then that statement about the MSBA's grant program is an informational statement that has, there's no, like, verb in there that, so, like, the MSBA is not going to take any other action on this matter. It's, the town is going to take other action on this matter. But if we move that, then I would make a motion to ask the committee to, formally ask the board of selectmen to include this article in the warrant for town meeting, special town meeting in the fall.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second of the motion.
Second of my day. Have any other discussion?
Just a quick comment, you know, while the motion's out there. So hearing about this, of course, I was shocked by the number because we've been so focused on the override and everything else we've had to do. It hasn't really been in front of our mind. And all of a sudden, like, whoa, this has to be done right now because we've got the town meeting moved up. So I had an hour to look into it, and I really like what the town of Mills did. You know, basically, they have all the information we've discussed here laid out very nicely. And I think it's a best practice we should try to copy so that anybody can go on there and say, oh, you know, this is what happens when we do a feasibility study. This is what happens in the timeline. Everything's laid out there very nicely. And help me understand the question, what do we get for this feasibility study? And it's a lot of work. And timing's everything. I wanted to make a punchline earlier, but I was going to say, Paul, do you have time to do this? I mean, why not, right? No, it's, it's an impossible, massive task involving dozens upon dozens of people. And the way that I see it is like, basically, as we're trying to get money from the state to do this massive project, you know, we can't just say, hey, this many kids, this is what we need, you know, and here's what we think it should cost. They're not going to take that. You know, it's got to be a complete, comprehensive, detailed study. And that's something that we don't have the time or expertise to do. And that means hiring experts to do it. So I'm absolutely fine. And with that, please continue on the motion.
Yeah, just, just one other point. I know it feels a little rushed today, and I know there's a lot of questions. Just a reminder for people in the public who may not know, like, the fall town meeting was moved much earlier than it usually is. And we just found out last week that the board of selectmen set the date for town meeting of October 7, which means the warrant questions have to be in by September 3, which is why we scheduled today's meeting at 3 o'clock in the afternoon because the whole timeline moved at. But I hear the questions, I respect the questions that everybody has. So Dave and I currently are supposed to be sitting on the building study committee for the middle school. Dr. Thompson, as you said, will be there, Paul Riccardi, lots of other people. I think Ellen Slater is the FinCom rep. Is it Tom Maloney for the board of selectmen, I think, is on it, I believe?
It might be Paul Bishop has the chair.
Is it Paul Bishop now? Okay, because I saw Tom in some correspondence, but maybe that's switched. But there are a lot of people we're bringing together. Dr. Thompson did send out a due to poll last week to try to get the building committee together the week of September 17. We just haven't yet finalized a date. We should definitely know that by the next time we meet as a school committee. And then what I'm thinking probably makes the most sense is the meeting after that, which is the 25th for us, we can provide more of an update to the full school committee. What feels important to me as a representative on that committee is that we are getting the questions and the feedback from everybody throughout the process. So if you already know you have certain questions that you want us to walk in on the week of September 17, let me know. Otherwise, you know, the next meetings, we can talk about it. I think we are a board who asks a lot of questions, and I like that, and I think it's important. But we all think through things differently, and we all bring different expertise to the table. So we should definitely continue this conversation. And I just don't want anybody to feel frustrated that we don't have the answers today. It's just unfortunately the way the timeline has fallen. But there is a motion on the table. Made by Maya, seconded by Dave. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Riccardi.
Thank you very much. Have a good weekend, everybody.
Okay, soon.
So next item of business, continuing with fall town meeting, is to talk a little bit more about the special town meeting warrant. Maya, did you want to guide us through the next part of the discussion?
Sure, as Teresa mentioned, we have until noon on Tuesday to request anything to be placed on the town meeting warrant. And I believe that we need to address the 509,000, I think it's 509-290. That was, so, that is currently sitting in our budget and under a reserve line account. And we had said we would transfer that back. So I, just to refresh everybody's on this. When we were going through the very difficult budget process for FY '20, there was discussion about money that had been in free cash that was originally sort of earmarked to help with the Forbes Hill expenses. And it wasn't needed for that because we had, I think partly because we had decided to mothball the property and things like that. So there, the budget balancing committee had voted to recommend that that money that had been earmarked, which was a little bit more than 509,000 dollars, be transferred to the schools in the event that the override failed. And so that was going to minimize the bleeding? I mean, if the override had failed, it still was going to be awful. But it was, it was definitely a help and certainly I was appreciative of those on the budget balancing committee who recommended this. But it was always with the understanding that that money would be transferred if the override failed. So, but then due to the mechanics of it, it, town meeting needed to just vote to appropriate that money to the schools. But then when we showed our budget for what we would do if we got the additional 4.7 million dollars, part of that was that we would reimburse that 509,000 dollars and send it back. Either send it back to free cash or return it to some other use within the town. I don't know that we can technically just transfer back to free cash. I think we may, there's others who need to understand that. But it doesn't need to be part of our budget. So if you look at all of the documents that we provided to town meeting members at the time of the override, when we had that budget that was the, the budget that showed where that extra 4.7 million dollars was going to go, this 509,000 dollars was on a line that was called like school committee reserve or something like that. And the description there said that we would return this money. So I feel strongly that we need to ask the board of selectmen to put that on the town meeting agenda. Because town meeting, since they appropriated the money in the first place, they're the ones who would need to reappropriate that to some other way. We definitely aren't spending it, no matter what. It's just sitting in that reserve account. But I think it's important that we send that money back. Now, the problem is, of course, that we haven't decided, I don't know that anyone has really thought about where it's going to go. But right now, we're just setting what we're going to discuss at town meeting. There's a separate decision about what the motions will be at town meeting. And that, and then FinCom has a role in that and all that kind of stuff. So I think that we should just ask that the reallocation of that money be placed on the town meeting warrant. And I would suggest that we leave it to, you know, Tom McQuaid and Bernie Cooper to figure out exactly how that language needs to work on the warrant. But I think we need, we need to make sure that we're requesting that that go back because that was very much part of our, our pledge to the town.
Any thoughts or questions on that?
No, I make a motion that we ask town meeting to put forth a motion for everyone to, to reappropriate these, these funds to the town or how they see fit. Language, again.
So we're asking the board, yeah, so we're asking the board of selectmen to put this amount back on for reallocation at town meeting.
Yeah, in whatever way is the, you know, the appropriate language. And I think it's 509-290, but it might be 509-270. So somebody needs to look up the actual number.
Okay. Okay, so Dave made a motion, Maya seconded it. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Is there anything else for special town meeting that we needed to discuss at this time?
Remind everyone the dates.
October 7. And then I think the expectation is that it is going to be at least the 7th and the 10th. It's Monday and Thursday.
Monday.
Okay, so school committee addenda. Mara, do you have anything?
Hi. Welcome back to school, teacher, staff, everybody. And I hope you have a great year and enjoy Labor Day.
Maya?
I agree with Mara.
Dave?
All teachers and students, staff, welcome back and wishing you the best of luck this year.
Just a reminder to the school committee that we are supposed to have our individual evaluations of Dr. Thompson done by September 4. So please do not forget to do that.
And actually, can I also request that when you finish, can you send an email to me and Joan to let me know that you're done? Just in case people are done early or, like, you know, just, because we'll have a lot of work to do that last week.
Yeah, okay. All right, so is there a motion to adjourn? Made by Mara, seconded by Dave, all in favor? Hi, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Teresa.